All right, good evening, everyone. I am going to call this meeting to a halt at 7:00 PM. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda for today is the approval of the agenda. So do we have any deletions, additions, comments, questions, anything? Sealed and wound, we will go ahead and approve the agenda for today as presented. Public input and announcements.
Do we have to?
Do we vote on the agenda?
No, if there's any changes, if there's any changes. No public input? All right, so we're going to go ahead and go through our discussion of public comments for obvious reasons. So approval of minutes for September 21st, 2022. Do I have any?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Don't we have to talk about any possible changes or?
Any additions or corrections?
Yeah, any additions or corrections? Anything? Sealed and wound?
I'll second it.
It's done. All right. Move on. Student representative updates.
Yes, sir. So let's just run the ramp up a little bit because it started recently. So this past weekend was homecoming weekend and that entails a lot of fun here at Mill River, obviously. We had a lot of us on Saturday, that was homecoming. Saturday was homecoming and there was a lot of sporting events followed by a dance that evening.
Our senior class, just from the homecoming dance, raised over $1,000 for our senior class. Next Wednesday is the, are the PSATs for 10th and 11th graders in the morning and then seniors have, they meet, they have workshops, so they meet with like Ms. Avery for the essay, Common App, whatever, and graduation. And then we did Star 360 this week for math and ELA. And then, do you want to say that one?
Yeah, we're meeting with ninth graders during advisory sometime soon and sometime next week. Wasn't it Thursday?
I think so, yeah. So Thursday, next Thursday, we'll be meeting with ninth graders and see if they want to bring, talk about anything.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
We appreciate.
I want to know how, I want to know how the dance was.
It was, teachers came up to us for the, we also, the pep rally, I forgot to mention that, but teachers for the pep rally, teachers came up to myself and Ms. Thompson and other kids and said it was the best one they've had in like eight years. So it was really good. And then the dance, it was good. So, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Did you, who, who did the music or did you all take turns with your playlist?
We had, and we had Mr., Peter Roach, the music teacher, he volunteered to do the music for the dance. So we just had kids go in the main office that, beginning of that week and write down songs they wanted and then he would play them up the dance. So that's what we did.
Awesome. And congratulations on raising to 20, that's great.
Thanks.
We appreciate hearing from you and just a reminder, our schedule did get off a little bit because we decided to go to Tinmouth. Our intention is to have your student report at least once a month. Dana was asking, hey, can I come to Tinmouth anyway? Yeah, absolutely. And Sydney and Preston, our student reps are always welcome. But we're not going to put you on the spot every time or we're not gonna, don't feel bad if you only make it once a month, but feel free to come when you can. So the next meeting we have, we won't have an update from you on the agenda, but we will the meeting after. And I think we'll be, we'll be excited to hear about that meeting with the ninth graders. Absolutely.
Thank you. Middle school update.
BJ.
Hey, BJ. How are you?
Long time no see.
Good.
Okay. So with BJ setting up, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Mary Calden, the middle school team leader and seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher. And I'm working in my 23rd year here at Mill River and it's really very cool to see these student representatives that I had a few years back as seventh graders, carrying themselves very well and maturing quite nicely. So that's a really cool opportunity that you guys have. We're going to introduce you to a few things that we kind of want to highlight about the middle school. Kim Moore, go ahead and introduce yourself, sorry.
Kim Moore, this is my fourth year at Mill River. I was previously at Clarendon Elementary School for 20 years teaching fifth and sixth grade math. I spent two years, wrote between Shrewsbury Mountain School and Clarendon and then, as I said, this is my fourth year teaching here at the middle school, seventh and eighth grade math. And I was a little bit devastated at first, leaving my comfort of 20 years at Clarendon, but it's been a really good fit and I'm super glad and happy to be here, so.
And we're happy to have her. You're up first.
You want to go first?
Okay. If that's ready to go.
So I graduated from UVM with a master's degree in mathematics, or curriculum and instruction with a focus in mathematics and through VMI, Vermont Mathematics Initiative. And they just started offering a postgraduate certificate program for math leadership. What I've chosen this year to focus on to improve my instruction and bring the mathematics to life for my students is technology-based. So reluctant to give up my MacBook Air that I've had for 15 years, like it's my comfort, my security blanket, if you will. Talking with BJ, I'm like, okay, I, you know, I love my Mac, but I'll try it and he was right. It's transformed my instruction. I'm getting better and better at it. So how this works is BJ's purchased some touchscreen Chromebooks that both Mary and I are using. It allows me to do much more interactive instruction. It brings it to life up on the TV. I can walk around the room with my Chromebook and I can write exactly on the PDFs that the kids are using for our math instruction. So I can pull up the PDFs onto that TV screen. I share my screen. Where's the place? Here? So I am not the center of attention during instruction during the whole class time. So this is just an example of one of our eighth grade concepts and skills that we're currently working on. So I let the kids collaborate a lot and work together and then we come together to consolidate it. So what's really nice, so I, a PDF, I can be walking around the room and I can write right on this in the moment, write what they have said. I can get rid of what I've done to re-show it to them. They can take notes in that moment, write down questions, I can answer them if I need more space. And I've been figuring this out as we go along, so I.
BJ downloaded this Squid Notepad and I'm like, yeah, I'm not sure.
Nope, I love it. It allows me to just start any note, blank. I can write down what it is we're working on. I can draw models I'm working on. This is a horrible model, seventh grade, we're working on fractions and comparing fractions. So they can see exactly what to do, they can analyze it, they come up to the board, they will actively interact with it as well. It has just transformed how I teach and the fluency in which I teach and I'm getting better, better at it, going back and forth between the PDFs and the notepads. This is, this is just another example of something we work on in the classroom, so the kids are working on it. And they're looking at the TV and hearing me and watching me instead of really just watching me. So I stand in the back of the room quite often and it was an adjustment for them at first, but I'm loud and they can hear me and they're getting used to it. And I, my eighth graders especially are saying, this is so cool, Ms. Moore, this makes so much more sense when you can do it this way. Yeah, Dana's shaking his head. Remember the Elmo? Because I had the Elmo, the document camera and it wasn't always clear. And if I had to start over, I had to have a new piece of paper and put it in our Elmo. I can, it just allows me to write on it, change colors. Really kind of cool thing that the kids really like is when I use the laser pointer, pay attention to this section, what are you noticing here without me going up and getting in their way and seeing it. It's just really, really cool. So I thank BJ for allowing me this opportunity to use this technology. It's on a cart. We can share the piece of technology, can go into Mary's room where she can interact if we pull up maps. Maps, yeah, we're, we're working on that.
Working on sharing hasn't happened quite yet.
But it has just transformed my teaching and the kids are really enjoying it and much more engaged. And today's, my eighth grade math class today was probably one of the best math classes I've ever had with them, in part because they're used to the format of what I'm doing, but they're just engaging in conversations with each other and discourse, if you will, among all of us in the classroom and having conversations and letting them share and they'll go up to the board. I can interact, if they don't have this ability because they don't have the touchpads, but I can also, if they want to come up and share, built into this is a writing tool, so if they want to come up, they can come up and circle and talk about what they were doing and they can share their own thinking as well. So it's just really, it's a lot of fun and I can't wait to explore it more. There are other math programs I can use that they interact with, they're interactive on their own screen top, screens. I've connected them to Google Classroom and so they can collaborate. I did a scientific notation lab with them on this site called Desmos and I can pull up the live board at, so I'm getting immediate feedback from these kids, knowing who's confused, who's not. They're all really comfortable with sharing their thinking and taking a risk and saying, wait, I'm not getting this, who can help me? And I pull up their work and it's just, it's great. I thoroughly enjoyed it and it's been a good goal for me because it connects to my math leadership program through VMI. So that's, so I can interact through my laptop or the kids can interact through the interactive TV.
Okay. For now. So one of the focuses for middle school this year is our advisory piece, which is, not to pat ourselves on the back, but has always been a pretty strong program in the middle school. And we're really working on our PLCs, through our PLCs, try not to use too many acronyms, where our students and their PLPs. So they're working on their own PLP achievement slides right now and I do want to thank whoever is responsible, I think BJ had a large chunk in that, streamlining that process. There's nothing worse than sitting in front of a whole bunch of kids working on this conversation of goal-setting as 12-year-olds coming into your classroom and not really having a strong sense of how to make those goals and really trying to work them through that process. So right now, we're really focused on just what achievements are being made outside of their academic realm. So they're doing some things like, like I have a few kids right now who are really involved in 4H and their horses are their lives. So they have done a lot of things competitively with their horses. I've got some students who maybe have done gymnastics or cheer, dance, all sorts of activities. And we're just trying to get those kids to understand that it's a whole student we're looking at and we really want them to feel successful and we really want them to be able to. Yeah, I was like, what's going on up there? Just what I'm talking about. So up on the screen, you can see that template that BJ sent out to all of us and we're focusing on that achievement slide where they're really putting in all these little things. And by little, I mean things that they don't even think about as an achievement. I have a young man who said, well, I've rebuilt an engine. I'm like, well, that's a really darn good achievement. I'm like, I can't go anywhere near that. So a lot of things that we're just able to grab some of those kids who may be sitting in the classroom all day long, isn't their achievement necessarily, but we're finding other places that we can kind of do some celebrating of those achievements, which is a really big focus for us. The other piece with advisory is really just creating that community and we're kind of working on that through our PLCs, where we're providing a safe environment, we're providing a comfortable environment, we're providing, hopefully creating a community of students who can feel comfortable sharing anything within our, our little group that we have. So all of our classrooms in the middle school have around 12 to 15 students, I would say, in our advisory. We meet every day, kind of mid-morning for about 15 minutes on a couple days, 20 minutes on the other. Really good place to have that close-knit group and really kind of start to become a family and a real community with a small group in our middle school. So we're really trying to work on some interpersonal skills. That's a, that's a tough one, a middle school transition, that's never an easy task. So that's one of our big pieces, progress monitoring, looking at Power School, hey, what do you have for missing work? And honestly, just a check-in and a communication time so that we can really start to create those relationships with our students, which is so important.
And I have to say, I feel like we at the middle school, and I'm not exposed to what the high school teachers do on their Google Classrooms, but I know for us, if the only positive thing that came out of COVID is our use of Google Classroom and how much it has structured us and helped the kids stay on task. It's still a work of progress with our seventh graders, but what's really nice, they have Google Classrooms for each of their content, these are my math blocks, but their to-do list and what they have to do is right there. They never, ever have to forget what they've got for homework. And we all pretty much set it up the same way, so they can go in and see, as you can see, I do it by week. So as much as we were like, what, we have to create all these templates and we have to share them, has really been a good thing for me. It's kept me organized and on top of what I need to do. But even more important, what it allows me to do is, because we're still facing kids who have to be out of school for a while because of testing positive, and it allows me to have them have access to what they need while they are at home, you know, unless they're, you know, not feeling super well. So I'm always posting stuff saying, if you are out this week, you know, they have a place to go to see what they should do. We can post instructional videos. They have access to the math sheets on Great Minds, so they have their own Great Minds accounts, our math program, which is new this year, just an updated version of Eureka Math. I absolutely love it. And they always have access to what they need to hopefully help them keep up with what we're doing in the classroom, so they, when they come back, they're not feeling completely blind when they walk in. So that's another utilization of our advisory time and our class time connected to Google Classroom.
And we made sure to make the announcement to parents at Open House that this is the student tool. So it's only as good as the student. So students can do their work, attach it, click turn in, know that they're done. Or you sometimes have those students who click turn in, no work attached, and they say that they're done. So we really suggest that parents use the Power School portal for that piece, because that is teacher input as opposed to student input. That's our little disclaimer. Every time we get a chance to mention it, we will. Next up, one of the things that we do in the middle school is something called morning meeting, but we call it morning meeting middle school style. The elementary version, very different from what we do. We meet every two weeks as an entire seventh and eighth grade middle school. And it's really a time for us to celebrate, first of all, we celebrate birthdays, we celebrate academic achievements, we celebrate athletic achievements, pretty much anything that we can to really recognize our kids in school, out of school, whatever we can come up with, you know, whether it was a cross-country meet or a 4H event that went on, whatever. And then it's also a great time if we need to talk about, whoo, we're having some issues in the cafeteria, we're not picking up after ourselves, like just those kind of quick little reminders with behavior. It's also kind of just, again, that sense of community, again, where we do get to come together as a full group. Everybody's on the same page, we're all hearing the same message, same time. And the kids actually look forward to it. Every week they're asking, is this, is this morning meeting week? Nope, that's next week. And they kind of get a little upset about that. One of the main reasons they love it is we give out something called kudos cards in the middle school. So any adult in our building that has a middle school student, they have the opportunity to give that student a kudos card for being kind, being respectful, or being responsible. And we try to give them out as freely as possible and recognize those students. Those names go, or those cards go into, she is a tech genius, I'm loving this. So we are able to give those out, I think we do it once a month, pretty much? No, every, every two weeks we do. And so what Kim just pulled up is the newsletter that Ms. Thompson sent out tonight, I believe. And we have our winners for the first two drawings pictured right there. And they love being called out of that box because they either get some free time in the gym during flex block or they get ice cream sundaes, their choice. So we have a good split of numbers and who wants ice cream and who wants to, some free time to get that energy out in the gym, so.
We like the ice cream, too.
We have the ice cream, if there's any leftovers, we'll take care of that for them. So that's something that we do as well in the middle school. You're okay with the VMI, you kind of did that earlier, right?
I did, yep.
Homework club.
Homework club. So we initiated something this year through, is it still the 21st Century Grant? After-school program?
Actually, no.
No, it's not? Okay.
We will be applying for grant funding to sustain some of this, but right now, not 21C.
Okay. So right now, we've initiated a homework club, Monday through Thursdays, that is staffed by licensed teachers. And we encourage any student who wants to come in to get extra support. A lot of our athletes, as they're waiting for practice to come in, will voluntarily come in or we teachers will go, oh, now would be a really good time for you to come in and start your homework when we're here, especially I do Mondays, so I snag my math students. It's a quieter place, they get snacks, food is always a draw. And they get a little bit more individual support for what they need or to just get their homework done. Kids are busy outside of school, we, we don't always have students who will complete their work beyond the school wall, so if we can keep them here and get it done, we will. What's also really new, and Caitlin brought this to us and I want to say we really appreciate this, we now have this process called an academic obligation process. So if a student, so we're holding them accountable again and teaching them how to take responsibility for their learning, which is a lifelong skill. We send home this form, should they not have their homework done? So-and-so doesn't have their homework done, this is the homework they need to do, they are expected to stay on this day for after-school homework club. If they get it done by this date, they don't have to stay. And then it gets sent home and there's a form at the bottom that parents fill out saying, yes, I see that they haven't done their homework, yes, my child will be staying. Or they write a plan for when they're going to get it done and say, my child will have this done by Friday, before they, you know, when they come to school on Friday, they return it to us and then we keep a file of it. So it's just another way of us helping them stay accountable, communicating to parents because they don't often know when kids haven't done their homework because they don't always access Power School, to check missing assignments. It seems to be working. You know, it's important to tell the kids, you know, tough learning curve, it doesn't mean you're a failure, it doesn't mean you're awful rotten, it just, you're not going to fail seventh grade math or eighth grade math, it just means, how do I get more organized? And how, you know, how can we help you? And sometimes all it takes is that one time to have to go home to mom and dad and say, I didn't do my homework. And it turns them around. So it's been quite popular and busy, actually, each day.
And a huge shout-out on that to Kelly Stubbs, she really worked with Carrie Becker to get that organized. And she's kind of been our secretary of all that paperwork. So a lot of the teachers who might be not singly a middle school teacher, but they're shared, like world language teachers or any of our unified arts teachers, they're giving us the paperwork and then Kelly's really facilitating that, a lot of the communication home, if we didn't get the form back and all that. So she's really the organizer of it. And then most of us, I know Jen Severn's been in there helping and Andrew Savoy, our new special educator, Kim does a day.
Jen Dupree, one of our assistants.
Jen Dupree does, yep, our, our Wednesday day while we're in our faculty meetings, she takes over the role. So it's, it takes a village and, and we're working on it really hard right now. And I think we're going to start to see the academic obligation pieces coming because now we're ramping it up and we're starting to see a little bit longer to-do lists that kids have of missing work, so we're trying to cut that off right now before it gets built up anymore.
I want to echo, thank you, Kelly Stubbs. I don't know if you're usually, sometimes you're watching. She is our organizational queen and it's just one less pile of papers I have to take care of, so I can do my end of it and hand it off to her and she files them. She's really good at organization, so I appreciate that.
The last topic we have, well, okay, next to the last topic, transferable skills and habits of work. We've been really working hard the last few years and that's really our focus in the middle school, are those transferable skills and habits of work, not more so than content, but kind of feeling if we focus on those, the content will follow. And really trying to educate students to understand how those are actually transferable. And my best example, I always give the kids, like part of our day is this self-direction transferable skill and habit of work. If you don't come to class with all the materials that you need, how are you going to be successful? So I always say to them, if I'm a contractor and I go to show up to the job work site without my hammer, without my drill gun, without my nails, without my ladder, whatever I need, what am I going to be doing all day? Am I going to have that job for very long? And then I kind of give them an educational example, like what if Ms. Thompson says, I need to see your lesson plans, I need to see your grades? And I'm like, I don't have them, I didn't come prepared to class, am I going to have a job much longer? So trying to really kind of make them understand how these do transfer, whether it's in my social studies class, Kim's math class, their French class, their computer tech class or art, they're still going to be used very similarly. So we've really focused on that, our extracurricular eligibility is based on that, so that's how much of a focus it is for them to really understand how important those skills are. And it's a wide range of things. It can be, you know, being prepared for class, all the materials that you need, working collaboratively with your peers, wide range of things that will help them, whether it be in ninth grade, college, military, job force, but in the future. So that's kind of coming around, I think kids are really starting to understand that. And then asking those questions when they see that grade, why did I only get it two? Well, let's take a look at the rubric and see what you did or didn't do that would necessitate that number coming up.
I have a copy of the rubric, that's, I don't have one.
Oh, okay.
I haven't downloaded yet.
Did you want to add anything else on habits of work?
Nope.
I can speak for Kim and myself, as far as how that is assessed in our classes, we do a formative assessment every single week and then every fourth week, it's a summative. So they get to practice those skills for three weeks and then the performance is that fourth week, so that they kind of understand how that process works. So they have received so far, we're that many weeks into school already, they've received their first summative assessment on that, in both of our classes, anyway.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. The only other topic I wanted to bring up was, that was a lot of our positive, this is a little bit more of a negative topic, but a concern. I'm finding in my classes, that's a huge concern, is social studies education lacking at the lower grades. And it's not meant to be offensive to any of our elementary schools, but I think it's time that we really take a look back at that K-12 vertical alignment to see where we've fallen down. Why are kids getting to seventh grade without any social studies instruction or one day a week or two days a week? I know and a few years ago, we had put through the Louisiana believes and kind of thinking we could do a humanities portion to that and it's just not there. There's just not enough social studies happening. So I'm kind of putting a little bit of a bug in your ear to see how we can solve that problem together and make that disappear. I mean, in my head, I'm going, I know one of the reasons, it's not a tested subject. It's not math, it's not ELA, and it's not science, doesn't have its test. And when I went to a social studies conference, the answer was, none of you social studies teachers can agree on what needs to be tested, that's why there isn't a test, which is probably fairly accurate.
Has been for years.
And has been for years. So, you know, just putting that plug in there, what can we do to really just improve that process? Because it's definitely evident that it's missing and it's across the boards. I don't think there's really one place we can say, really stellar here, it's kind of across the board. So there's my plea for that. Please help. And then we wanted to open it up for questions from you folks, if you had anything to specifically ask us from the middle school. Yes, sir.
On the social study thing.
You've passed a good time, so that's a question, okay.
What are you looking for? What, you know, if I'm a student and you were looking at me and asking me questions or looking for responses, what things are, are missing?
So I would say basic social studies concepts and I don't know how else to really start. So I would say basic social studies concepts, and I don't know how else to really specify, but if I'm receiving a 7th grader, I feel like basic terminology, like the equator, you should know what that is by the time you're getting to 7th grade, that's missing, in some cases.
So geography?
Geography, yeah, so 7th grade curriculum is US geography, government, and history. So I was under the impression that geography was definitely happening, and we might be a little lax on the history piece, because there's a lot, so I can understand that. But we're missing a lot of those major concepts of really understanding just common terminology, basic concepts that are not there.
And the ability to think and make sense of what they're looking at on an atlas, and transferring that into their own thinking in maps as well, that's missing, because they don't have experience with it yet. So looking at a map of New England, only because, I've had so many conversations about this, looking at a map of New England on an atlas and transferring that into a map that needs to be labeled, it's just, they don't have that. That's a transferable skill, thinking and making sense of something, and not somebody having to say, here's this state, here's this state. And it's just being able to play with it and work with it.
And a lot is just lack of exposure, like, I really feel like, we have GPS now, so we don't need to look at a map, we don't need to know how it works. And I said, well, here's a prime example, I was in New Hampshire one weekend, trying to get somewhere else, I put it into my GPS, and five miles later, I was back at St. Park, and I just saw that. There's that piece, and maybe some common sense would have been helpful, but it just, it really frightens me to know that these kids don't even know where they exist in that part of a map. You know, when they're looking at a map, where do we live? A lot of the kids can certainly identify that, but sometimes just kids looking at an atlas, it's so foreign, they don't even know, if they're looking at the US, oh, I should be looking over here on the east side, not the west. Those are things that are really glaring. Yes, sir?
So, first of all, thank you for the presentation, fantastic, great information. Question on the touchscreen. Fantastic piece of equipment, thank you, BJ. Can you, when you're doing a presentation, or doing a lesson, do you have the ability to save that back to your computer? So here, I've got all this stuff, ooh, I want to capture that.
That's a great question, so yes, I can save it and share it where I need it to be shared. So if I have students missing, and I've done some note-taking, so my students in math do a lot of collaborating, they're standing at white books, whiteboards on the wall, working together and talking, then as I'm circulating and asking, queuing questions to help them. And when it's time to really bring it together and consolidate, what I call consolidation, the understanding of what we're working on, and we practice a skill of good note-taking, so that when they're working independently, they can refer to their notes to help them. I can take the notes on the Squid or any other note app up there. I can save it, and I can share it via email, I can post it onto Google Classroom for them to utilize as well. So I do have that capability.
And then the second part I had was on the social studies. We could spend an entire board meeting, an entire afternoon, an entire day. I think a lot of it is the combination of what we've done with technology. There's GPS, there's iPhones, there's computers, there's all the, I can get everything I need from here, which I can imagine in my head.
Right.
But obviously, we need to look at MRU, and then perhaps, what are we doing statewide? Or try and figure out what that bar is, and say, this is what we're going to achieve.
Well, it's like a calculator, I tell my kids, a calculator's only as good as the user understands what to do. So it's like, if you put garbage in, you're going to get garbage out, right?
Absolutely.
So it's the same concept with the maths and stuff, and just experiencing them and understanding it.
Absolutely.
It's all about thinking, it's really not, I mean, my kids are going to leave, some of my kids are going to leave my math class and never, ever want to look at multiplying fractions again. And I say I'm okay with it, I mean, I want them to understand it. However, if they have the ability to think and make connections and try to do some problem solving, I'd much rather develop thinkers than just doers. And that's a major shift in how to be in school.
And a lot of that part with the social studies is, I'm never asking them to memorize where stuff is, I just want them to experience it, be able to think, well, if there is a mountain range here, how does that benefit, how does that detract from whatever, like, let's start thinking about that.
In no case am I saying they should memorize, but mostly, they should have general north, south, east, west, there's 50 states, this is how government works. You should at least have some baseline knowledge.
I'm pretty sure I could write a book about some of the answers. Anything else we can try and tackle?
Everybody else up?
I just want to thank, I teach middle school, so I want to thank my middle school colleagues. It sounds like you're doing a tremendous job, and I have so much empathy for the social studies.
Thank you. Math is always just like.
We were doing something in 7th grade, and it was, you know, I'm from a city in the world, and the students were like, what is this? What's Casablanca? What, you know, what are all these cities? What's Nicaragua? And so we took the opportunity to explore on Google Maps, to see where these places are. A student asked, why are we, why do they suppose we know this? And I said, because that's a presupposition, but we're going to learn it now. So it can be integrated, you know, vertically, backwards. So thank you for raising that issue, we will definitely.
Appreciate it. And I do have to say, on the opposite end of it, I do have one section of 8th grade this year, and they are loving doing the research that they're doing. Our 8th grade curriculum is world cultures. So right now, we've just finished our first project with the ABCs, the hated ABC project that I do. But for every letter of the alphabet, there is a piece of culture attached to that. So kids were able to select a country they were interested in from a kind of pre-populated list that I might have made. But they had the freedom to choose, and then we've done a kind of focused group right now. And I asked them for feedback the other day, and I said, okay, what went really well with this? What would you like to see changed? Nothing changed. And I was like, whoa, okay, that's, let me write that one down. And what did you like about it? And from kids who I struggled to get to do work last year and be engaged, I loved every part of it. And I'm like, okay, are you trying to get the four exceeding, you know, trying to broaden those a little bit? And the answer was no, they truly are, just being able to explore and learn about things that they're not familiar with. So I'm done, that's my job, like, that just really made my day, that they're really into it and they want to learn more. So that was kind of a nice plus on the 8th grade end of it.
Huge thanks to both of you.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
I want to highlight a theme that came up a bunch of times in what they were sharing, from the academic end all the way to the behavior end. For students and for teachers, you heard goal-setting, you heard trying something new, you heard checking in to see how it's working. We have a new thing in place to try and support our students doing homework. We're not just punishing or penalizing them, we're working with them, we're putting things in place. And you'll be hearing from this group, or other middle school teachers, later in the year, to talk about how are things going. We're committed to really identifying what our kids know, what they don't know, what we know, what we don't know, putting planes in place and trying to do the best we can. So I think that's awesome to hear that from these two wonderful educators.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, we got out, under time, I just want to point that out, too.
There you go.
I hope there was a public input, but. Thank you, guys.
Do you want to share a couple of things?
Yeah.
Can I just give a quick update, just to some things to know that are going on at Mel River?
Yeah, so some of it's already been said, we had a great homecoming last week, the pep rally was so fun. I had a group of seniors, Cindy would be one of them, who came up to me and said, we need to bring some pride back into the school after COVID. And so myself and Ms. Avery worked with them on planning that, and I just, it felt really good. It felt good to see kids smiling, felt good to play them in dodgeball. You know, I got hit in the head, which was fine, but it was, it was really a good week. Last week, we also did our open house, and just recently, earlier this week, I think yesterday, the days have escaped me, but we had a fast fun night, put on by Stacy and the guidance department. One thing I did learn, I mentioned it to parents and guardians and caregivers, was spreading the dates of open house and parent-teacher conferences out. So just putting the date of September 7th for next year as our open house date, I'm calling dibs over Kim's athletics and Kristen's concerts. And, yeah, so parent-teacher conferences this week, homecoming went great. There's been talk of advisories, Mary and Kim talked a lot about the importance of advisories. This, last month, we sent 9th grade students for a team-building day. Len, you had mentioned the last time I presented, wanting to do some of that transition stuff over the summer. I was really fortunate to have Ed Robbins reach out last year and say, we need to do something for these 9th graders, to like, connect them, help with the transition. So we did do that this fall, they did like a low ropes course. All the 9th grade advisory teachers went, and I got to sit in on their debrief, and they just said, what a fun day, like, kids learning to communicate and work together, and the teachers seemed to have a good time as well. And they're already planning more team-building and community service, and they will stick with those kids for the next four years. So really, you know, that stuff's so important, as, along with the academics. If kids don't feel connected to their peers and the staff in our building and our school, it makes it hard for them to be successful in the academic area. So, yeah, I am excited about the way the school year started, and I'm just looking for more positive things to come, so. Feel free to ask questions if you have any.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
All right, moving along to your strategic planning update.
I'll interrupt you real quick.
Sure.
Did either of the students want to leave? Just throwing it out there. Keep going.
Strategic planning update. So I have a couple of things that were attached in the board materials packet. One is, they both start with dates, 2022, 10:05, staff survey, and then caregiver survey. If we look at, why don't we do the staff one first? So when we met several months ago, and went over strategic planning, we did that at a 6 o'clock meeting prior to a board meeting, we outlined a process where we were going to be soliciting lots of input from our students, from our staff, from our community. And one of the items in that plan was to craft a survey, actually, to contract with a company who has reliable, valid surveys. I had brought choices of that survey provider to the board, and we had talked as a board about which one looked like the best path to go. We're contracting with that vendor. The next step is figuring out which categories we are actually going to survey. So what I had outlined when we talked about strategic planning was that I was going to ask the board for some input on that, and I was going to ask the staff for some input on that. The board, the way I've phrased this question is, are there any items that you're comfortable with us not looking into? Because if you look at that staff one, you'll see there are a lot of categories that we can look at. That makes a pretty long survey. And the longer the survey is, the fewer responses you're going to get. So I want to, want to think about that tonight, and if we can start with staff survey, then we'll jump on the caregiver survey. Teachers, I'm asking this a slightly different way. I'm going to ask teachers about the staff survey, and I'm going to ask them, what are the three or four categories on here that we better ask you about? If that makes sense? So I'm asking you tonight, are there any categories that you don't think we need to assess? And I'm going to ask teachers, what are the ones that we better assess? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Brian?
Yeah, Liz?
Just, I, I'm just wondering, this conversation, and this list is long.
Yes, it is.
This conversation could be, it could spiral a little bit, I'm just wondering, could we think about maybe doing, and I don't know, BJ would be the person to like the thing.
Yep, yep.
Can we kind of maybe all rank it, so that you get back a ranking?
Yep.
Of, of what we, as a collective, agree?
Yep.
You know, like, like, you know, when we do dates, and we all say, oh, yeah, this date worked for us, that sort of thing?
Yep.
Is that a possibility?
I could, I could very easily just send a survey to all board members, if you'd like to approach it that way. Okay.
I mean, that's, folks, what is everybody else's thought? I, like, I want time to read and think, like, I'm not prepared to give meaningful feedback tonight. I would love to read the list, you know, give me a deadline, give me a ranking key, I will do the homework. But I really want to, I want to read this list multiple times, I really want to think about it.
Yep. Absolutely comfortable with that. Absolutely.
Want to focus in fact.
And I'm comfortable if we want to have some discussion tonight, and still send a survey tomorrow.
Just, if I may, just a thought, today, what might be helpful, if you're looking for feedback?
Yep.
Is if we numbered these?
Yep.
You know, one through, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And then we, I think, because I went through it, and I chose ones that I thought were necessary.
Yep.
I didn't check the ones that I didn't think
Yep.
were important. So I guess, the fact of the matter is, the ones I didn't check are the ones that I didn't.
Yep, that process of elimination, yep.
But the fact is, is idea of, of getting the rest, and if we just put a numerical number, that's a, repeat isn't a numerical number.
Redundant, no, we can do that, we can do that.
And I would, I would send you back which ones I felt should be included, and which ones I felt we don't need.
Yep.
Because I, I think that's what Liz is saying, that just having them numbered makes it a little bit easier.
Yep. Absolutely.
The other thing that I would like to know, as like, picking out this, is what do the professional survey makers? Because obviously, there's recommended and other.
Yep.
And it's like, how much does each one outside of recommended add to the length? And like, you know?
Each of these, each of these are going to be about maybe four to eight questions. They're not going to be 10, they're not going to be two.
Okay.
So you can, you can ballpark them all being about the same number of questions.
And is it generally, is it, you know, five, five-scale question, like, you know, sometimes really, you know, like, that kind of thing? Or is it?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
There, there are some, there are some opportunities for us to put free response questions, but generally, these are going to be questions that are reasonably easy to answer.
And then the other question that I have is, for thinking about ranking them, of, of, thinking about what we want to actually look at over time.
Yeah.
And is there ones in here that we want to get a snapshot of, just because maybe we're interested? Versus, the next time we take the survey?
Yep.
It doesn't go on that. So just of ideas of like, what I'll be thinking about when I'm going to rank it?
Yep.
If we have something that like, maybe an extra box or something to check, to just be like, I just, a one-time. Like, maybe we don't track this over time, or it's not as important.
And what I would suggest, Josh, and tell me if this is getting at what you're, what you're asking, I would suggest we ask more questions the first time than we think we need to ask. And then when we see the results, we can look and go, oh, wow, actually, we're doing pretty darn well here. Maybe that isn't something we need to continue to ask. But then we'd focus on continuing to ask in the areas where we see most potential for growth. So that, I'm wondering if there are some areas right now where we say, you know, we're not really worried about that, so we're not concerned about asking about that, to shorten that list. But I would, I would recommend a wider net first, and then narrow it down based on what we want to look at over time. If we just asked four or five things, we can't go back and ask them again. So the first time we ask them, we get baseline data. So part of the, the power of these surveys is tracking progress over time. Liz?
Yeah, so to your point that you're hoping to get something, or we, you know, aren't ready to be named.
Oh, no, no, Liz, I don't need, I don't need answers tonight, I don't.
Okay. Well, so my, I guess my question is, is, do we have a narrower focus? Do we have a more specific outcome? I know this is a staff survey, with that in mind, like, I might go through and, you know, cross off anything that has to do with a student. If we're looking, but I guess I want a little more information about what the end. about what the end goal is. Are we looking for?
Yep.
For example, you know, what staff perception of the climate?
Yep.
What staff perception is of when we do business as opposed to?
Yep.
What staff perception is of our students?
Yep.
Or do we want like, like the whole universe?
Yeah.
A little bit of everything?
Part of, part of the reason for doing this as part of strategic planning is so that we can set big picture goals for the district. So we can get information back that says maybe, maybe school climate is born and we'll have some specific areas in school climate that we'll know we need to address. And that might become a district goal. Say we get information back that says school climate's actually in reasonable shape, but maybe it's professional learning. That's our weak area. So we know as a district, we need to work at getting better at professional learning. So, uh, as of right now, I don't have an idea of an end goal that would narrow this list down. Part of the survey is figuring out what are the areas we are weakest in and the most potential for growth so that we can do that work. One nice thing about this survey, when we get these results back, we will have strategies lined up with areas. So if we find an area of concern, they call it their playbook. There's a playbook that you can open up and you can get 10 different strategies for addressing that area. We can think about, gosh, do any of those make sense for us? Let's try this one. Six months later, survey again. Did we make progress? Well, no. Well, that strategy didn't work. What should we try next? So the goal is that we're doing that same thing our middle school teachers were doing. Getting information, finding areas where we need to work, setting goals, trying something, measuring if it worked. So no, no big predetermined outcome except that we start that process. Does that help, Liz? Yep, yep.
So I like the theme of give us the list. I presume the list will be the same for the caregiver list. Send it to us. We can either rank it.
Yep.
Say we like these ones, don't like these ones, whatever the, the theme is.
Yep.
But, uh, the question I have is the people that are taking the data.
Yes.
Do they capture incomplete surveys? So say?
Good question.
Say if we make a really big one.
Yeah.
And the time is an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And somebody's like, oh, I'm going to do this. And they get a breakthrough and they go, wow, this is just terrible. And they don't complete it. Do we at least get the 50% they completed?
I, I would guess.
That way if we start with, these are important, they do from one, three, and then they ditch the less.
I see what you're saying. So prioritize the first questions are the ones that we all think are the most important ones. Yeah. I would guess yes, because it's all electronic. The, the majority of these are going to be done electronically. Um, we will make paper available for folks. But since it's electronic and it's a system that we're going to have a dashboard that's going to give us results as soon as somebody's, uh, taken their survey, we should be able to get that information. Um, I wonder if they'll have sections of the survey and say you complete a section, we have that at least. Um, I will look into that and get you a solid answer. I, I hope the answer's yes.
The other thing would be, would be asking them, is there a point where people fall off?
Yeah.
Right? It's like, when is that?
I know when I've done large surveys in the past, they actually give you the opportunity to say save so that you can come back. But I don't know how big or how large, you said somewhere between four and eight. So if every one of these is six?
That's a lot of to do.
The recommended is nine. So you're going to spend 55 minutes.
Yep.
At a minute apiece, if you've got to read it and think about it and set up a lot of time.
Absolutely is. Yep.
And I think there's a different consideration for the staff because they're a relatively captured audience.
Yeah.
Versus the caregivers at home. That's like, we will have to be more judicious with what we send home. Or what, I, I think. We'd like to catch the widest net, but?
Yep.
I think the reality is that problem will.
Yep.
Fifty minutes? Not happening.
So if there really is, you know, to that point, if there really is something on here that we're not concerned about, then we, we don't want to waste people's time with it. You know?
Or at least if they give us the ability to prioritize it as such that?
Yeah.
These are the really important ones. Make sure you ask those first. And if somebody's due diligent enough to say, hey, I'm going to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
It can capture that later.
The other part that I do not know if it's possible, but like you, you know how we do all our testing though on computers so that we can get to what the kids know faster?
Yep.
So they don't have to answer?
Yep.
Is there?
This?
I guess the problem would be when it would, you can't give people different surveys.
Oh.
But like, if you, if someone responds with an extreme, does that then add a follow-up question that doesn't necessarily show up? But then I don't think that messes with your model anyway.
That we can't do. That we can't do. And the survey's not designed to work that way. But what the survey does have as a foundation is a lot of research into validity, reliability. So they have tested over time, lots of different questions. They've thrown out the questions that don't really line up with reality. Uh, and they've kept the questions that really work, which, you know, you, you look at some of these categories, uh, on the staff one and you say, school climate. How can you ask me five questions and know what school climate is? Actually, five questions seems like too few. But they're the five questions that most align in scenarios where school climate's actually really good or really bad. Those five questions are the best ones to ask. So they've done that research and they've given this survey to thousands and thousands and thousands of people across the country. So, um, we may be great if they could answer 10 questions and it was done because it, it worked like our online assessments, but it doesn't quite do that. I do think we're going to get way better bang for our buck than if we wrote our own survey. Who knows if we're asking good questions or not?
Absolutely.
And the cool thing on this, those five questions on school climate, we're going to see compared to, uh, national data. You might see that, uh, we might rank in the 75th percentile for school climate. Seventy-five doesn't sound great, right? But that's saying 75th percentile, we were, we are better off than 75% of other schools when it comes to school climate.
Yep.
So we'll get some really interesting context too. We're not just going to get a number back and don't know what to do with that number. We'll be able to see where we are compared to other schools too, which I think is, is valuable.
I think I asked this previously.
Yep.
But does the survey also do regional? Like the Northeast isn't quite the same as the Southwest.
I, I hadn't seen anything that suggested that. Um, if, if we get there and we see that, fantastic. But I, I don't know that it will.
Yep.
Um, I think the, the numbers get weaker when you get, when you try to do that on a smaller scale.
Just while it's on, the other, so besides the falling off point?
Mm-hmm.
If, before we get the survey, if they respond to in time, um, how long is, did like, does a section normally take for the average? Cause that would also just, you know, change my mind of how many things we should be putting up. Cause if, you know, if you can go through it pretty quick?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if five questions on school climate takes you five minutes, cause it's one to five.
Yeah.
Four, four, three. It could go fairly quickly. Yeah. I'll, I'll do some research on how long a typical survey takes and I'll see if they have some recommendations. Absolutely. And I'll use that to figure out when I get information from all of you around which questions you think are the most important ones. Uh, I'll, I'll narrow down, I think as needed based on those recommendations. Uh, then is, is everybody comfortable getting that survey then?
Yeah.
And getting that back to me probably by a week from now, maybe? Cause I would like to get these moving. Uh, we do want to get the survey out end of October.
Okay.
So that means we got a little work to do to do that. If I can get your feedback in a week, then we're still on track, if that's okay.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
So just to close that out, sign us something that says, do this, do it a week.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
And, and something, uh, no, nevermind, nevermind. I'll, I'll use the exact language that's on here to make the survey. The survey about the survey. So.
Perfect.
Okay, cool. Uh, I appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Anytime. Thank you. All right. Uh, moving along, the next thing would be inclusion statement, next steps.
So last board meeting, we did adopt an inclusion statement that we had looked at the meeting prior, that probably about a year and a half or two years ago, a community member had brought a sample to us and started this conversation. Uh, at the last meeting, we did have some discussion about, okay, so now what?
Yeah.
So, now what? Uh, and I think it's important to remember that this was a board action. This was something that was brought to the board. It's something that the board weighed and it was a, a statement from the board. Um, it wasn't a statement from our teachers. It wasn't a statement from our students. Our teachers and students were not involved in this process. You know, so thinking about that, you know, I wonder if that frames the conversation around, so what do we want to do with this? Where does it go?
That was my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I stepped away to use the bathroom. Um, so I may not quite know what I'm doing.
Fair enough.
Let me back in.
We'll let you know.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll do that. Um, so this is, this is part of our current articulation of board goals. And so perhaps, uh, we should, you know, we had also talked about, we had talked about using this information to inform, changing, modifying, updating. Basically, we have had that discussion that our board goals, our district goals should be a live, a living document, something that we are constantly evaluating and, um, you know, just changing if, if we need to change them. So.
And Liz, Liz, I think you picked the exact wrong 30 seconds, cause we actually moved to the next agenda item.
Oh.
Yep, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, all good. And you're exactly right that our, our board goals are a living document and something we'll always be revisiting. So good to, good to tack on to that last conversation.
We're on the inclusion.
Yep.
Next.
Yeah, yeah. So you, you answered the question of, so now what do we do perfectly on the surveys? Um, but now what do we do with our inclusion statement?
I think her statement actually still. So it's actually close to my own point to what the point of the inclusion statement is.
Okay.
That's our board goals are living, you know, and, uh, we're this big umbrella that, you know, as we go forward with our strategic planning, when we're looking at policies, when we're doing all that, but we are acknowledging that we adopted this statement and we're using it as just another point, another frame of reference of how we make decisions.
Okay, yeah.
And that, that's how I view why these things are important.
So, so the inclusion statement, one of the reasons for having it and what do we do with it? We use it as a tool to check our work.
Yeah.
We, we go back to it and go, are we doing this? You know, are we, are we inviting civil discourse? Cause that's part of the inclusion statement. Are we, are we listening to perspectives and having, uh, respectful conversation? Are we, and that's part of respecting diversity and, and making people feel included. So it's kind of a ruler. We pull it out every once in a while to make sure we're still doing this work. So we don't have to put it anywhere necessarily. We don't have to post it in the newspaper, but it's here and used.
I think it needs to be somewhere.
Yep. So we can.
It's on the, the website that, that where we have policies and, and the school board.
Yep.
And, and we frame this as in fact, you know, this is one of our basic tenants as a school board that, you know, so it doesn't need to be posted in every hallway.
Sure.
Cause that's not, it's, it's ours.
Yep.
And, and we need to take ownership of that.
Yep.
But I do think it needs to be somewhere. So if somebody says, you know, well, you know, I heard you guys did a inclusion statement. Where can I find it?
Yeah.
And, and I think if it's on the website under board stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, as, as, as it should be at the top.
Yep, we can do that.
If it's not readily available to be getting forgotten, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point. That's a good point.
I would be interested in, at the inclusion statement, um, next to our vision statement.
Mm-hmm.
So could we, is, can we do that?
Um, you mean right now, Liz?
No.
Oh, oh, oh.
Like?
Yeah.
It, it could be a homework thing.
Yeah, the closest thing we have to a vision statement and it's not labeled as one and you can argue, is it mission? Is it vision? Are they both in the same thing? Our board goals document, our current one, we do have something at the top that I would say is the, the closest we have to mission and vision right now. And I think we can, we can definitely.
Okay.
We could, we could pull that off of that document and put both of these in the same place on that, on that board tab. The first thing you see, um, two board statements, mission, vision and statement of inclusion.
I think this.
Fair enough.
And I'm, you know, maybe I'm splitting hairs.
No, fair enough.
But, um, that's what our, our vision and mission comes from.
Fair enough.
I, I really appreciate that Len, cause I was thinking, so just so folks know, like I, I quickly Googled what a vision and mission statement are. A vision statement is an articulation of your purpose and/or your aspiration. So it's aspirational. And your mission is basically, what are, what are we here for?
Yeah, right.
And so we've just been thinking in terms of, you know, board goals being living. Um, all of this work is, is, is ongoing and alive. And so, yes, perhaps we should look at our inclusion statement with vision, with mission. Cause you know, Len, you know, maybe, maybe that is our vision. Maybe that is our mission.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we should consider all of that.
Yep.
I would, I would add that it's the third side of a triangle, right? It's the values. That's kind of what it's really pointing to. And that's the tribe that stand together. Like how we're going to do that, why we're going to do it, in a way that we're going to do it.
Yep.
And the lens that we're making all these decisions through. So they all stand together that way.
And as we do our strategic planning work, so actually, yeah, to your point, Matt, Liz, you were on the right page. Um, we are still talking strategic planning. As we do that work, we're going to clarify our mission, vision. So I think we have, we now are working on all three legs of that stool. Um, and I think that's, that's good when we're doing work that's connected and we're finding those connections and we're not just doing random things. Um, other thoughts? What I'm hearing so far is we find a place to put it on the board page very clearly and at the top.
And Liz, exactly headed to where I, my brain was at is right now, the mission, vision statement is kind of fuzzy. But as we work through strategic plan and goal setting and we continuously update those.
Yeah.
Um, I think when people Google things, you're going to want vision, mission and this inclusion statement to be represented in one solid spot. Because if you're looking at one, the other two are so close to each other that, hey, look, there's that and there's that. And geez, these things all kind of are the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
Everybody else up?
We can do that.
Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Um, moving along, VOS BA annual meeting. Now I know, um, Adrian's not here tonight, so.
I think tonight we were going to be doing two things. Uh, we were going to be deciding how we were, oh wait, no, the 19th. I think, I think we still have a little bit of time to decide how to vote on resolutions, uh, because I believe it's the 20th that, that's going to happen.
So we should probably push that off to the next meeting then?
Yeah, so I wonder if waiting till the 19th?
All right.
Let's do that unless anybody else is prepared with the resolutions. I think Adrian's really been paying the most attention to that.
Then why don't we during agenda building, we'll push that off to the next meeting?
To the 19th. Perfect.
All right. Next would be bus van contracts and transportation information.
Uh, so bus and van contracts, we're still working on. That transportation information was a request, uh, and Coral is actually sick today. Coral was going to give that update. Um, there was a request based on our conversation around, oh, a bus going to Rutland City. Why does one of our buses do that? That conversation, we were going to get some more information on Coral around, uh, all the possibilities there. Um, are folks comfortable doing that on the 19th too? I think Coral only had about a five minute clarification on some of that.
We could push that off to the 19th. That'll be fine.
Does, are you, um, is she going to have more to talk about in that meeting or do you want to? Or do you want to just have that? Because that one's not going to have this, right?
She'll be at Tinmouth, yeah.
So, do you want to just have that?
You know what? Are folks comfortable if I just have her email the board?
That's fine.
That information?
That's, that's fine.
Is that okay, Josh?
Yeah, I just wanted her not to have to come out to Tinmouth.
Not that coming out to Tinmouth is a bad thing.
I know, but for five minutes.
What Coral's going to offer is separate, separate contract section.
Yes, 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 yes. So, I will likely keep the contracts on there just in case we get them. We're still working on those, but sometimes the back and forth takes longer than you'd hope. No, good point, Nick.
So, we still need the bus and van contract?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving along to community reports. Personnel, let's see what's here. Hey, cool. So, on that tonight, I will have a couple of things to bring before the full board. And this bell floating in front of me. Anyway, first is a letter of employment for Joe Hoffman as a support staff, bus driver, long-term in-house, on-call bus driver. And I would make that motion to approve this letter of employment for Joe Hoffman.
I'll take that.
Discussion?
I got a question. Joe has an emergency bus bound or whatever. If something happens at a school.
Yes.
Is he going to be the person like you or the assistant superintendent or somebody there to handle the situation?
There's generally always somebody here, absolutely.
So, if Joe is going, then that.
Yep. Well, we have, you know, my office is here, assistant superintendent's here, principal, assistant principal down the hallway, you know, we have four admin in the building.
What I'm saying is last year, nobody could be found.
Yep.
So, somebody has to be in your office somewhere.
Yep. There, you know, there are going to be times where I might be up at Tinmouth, you know, Jody might be up at Shrewsbury, and then the principal might be down in the gymnasium dealing with something, you know, that.
I'm just saying, if he's going to go to 201.
Yeah.
Somebody, if there's an emergency, he can be found.
I can't guarantee you that there won't be two emergencies. And if there are two emergencies, that's going to, you know, you see what I'm saying, Bruce? We will do our best to have people here, absolutely. But there might be scenarios where it's hard to find somebody. Does that, does that make sense?
We also work hard to communicate. Like, if I'm going to another school, I always stop by Ann and Debbie's office and say, hey, I'm heading to Shrewsbury. Then I wave at them when I get back. Brian and Coral and BJ and I meet weekly to go over our calendars. And then if something pops up, I always pop into his office as I leave.
Yeah.
It is dynamic every single day, but we communicate a lot.
Brian?
Yeah, Liz?
We, we had talked at one point about having a chain of command, like flow charts.
Yes.
This might be a good opportunity to just ask that, that we shared with the board so that we know, you know, what the chain of command is.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
My only other question would be, we, did we or did we not, a couple of board meetings, add him as a bus driver? I think, I thought I remembered doing that.
Not officially. He's different.
Yeah.
But this is a particular title as a long-term boss driver.
We did talk about it.
Yes.
So, we talked about this position and if this made sense. Once we talked about it, we advertised it and then ran through the process. The reality was, Joe was driving daily.
Yep.
But we were treating him like a sub that drove once a month. But he was driving daily. He has been driving daily for a while. And he's continuing to drive daily because unfortunately, something else you're going to get to in your personnel piece there. We do the best job we can to make sure we have coverage. We absolutely try to. There are likely going to be times where it's hard to find somebody, but we try as best as we can to know where everybody is. We don't, we don't have admin working remotely three days a week or anything like that. We don't. Once we've come back from COVID, we've recalibrated with everybody. If our teachers have to be here, then why aren't we here? So, we have people in the building. We have a lot of admin in this building every day. Is that, is that, is that concern, Bruce?
I don't question the fact that it's going to be a demonstration in the building.
Yeah, yeah.
My question is, how, if you're not in the office and you're somewhere else and Joe is not in his office, then what do I do?
Yeah, I guess, you know, are you thinking about being a teacher here? Like, teachers?
I'm thinking of a teacher with a situation that happens.
So, a teacher calls the front office and from the front office.
And they can't find anybody.
They can't find somebody? Yeah, I'm surprised that happened. They would have called the front office and nobody would have known where anybody was. Yeah. We can, we can look at that, but we tend to do a pretty good job of, Ann and Debbie, you know, if I'm going up to, like Jody was saying, if I'm going up to Shrewsbury, I have a scheduled meeting. On my way out, I'm saying, hey, Ann, going up to Shrewsbury. Text me if you need anything. So, yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that fully. And I understand that Joe are busy, they're running all over the building. But if something happens in a house of women and everybody's somewhere else, then it's an emergency. What do they do?
Well, I think if they, if they make a good faith effort to find admin, they call 911. And when they call 911, one of the great things about our updated system, we updated probably about five years ago, E-911 compliant. If somebody at Shrewsbury calls 911, I know, probably in about three minutes because Ann gets it on her phone and she says, oh, somebody at Shrewsbury called 911. And we're calling Kristin Simonetti on her cell phone saying, hey, is everything okay? You know, I, I wonder what else we can do, you know? And we're definitely open to suggestions, but, you know, we had the, we had that 911 call scenario not too long ago. And we had gotten ahold of Kristin to figure out what was going on, I think fairly easily. Probably took us maybe about five minutes or so and, you know, they were going, oh, wow, why are you calling us? They were surprised how quickly we touched base with them. So.
Just to add, do we need like a leadership team thing? So, maybe departments can have these conversations, your department leaders.
Yeah, and we can, we can absolutely clarify to folks the things they should do if there's an emergency and they need to contact somebody.
So, in our in-service, we, I have a flow chart that I handed out to all staff at the high school. And it basically says, if a kid talks about suicide, you immediately call up to Lynn and she'll walkie a counselor. If there's a threat, you immediately call to the front office, Mary Bride, and she walkies an admin. And then I just had Tracy order, I think, two or three more walkies for this year and make sure all the batteries were checked on those walkies. And Karen, myself, our dean of students, Stacy, all carry walkies throughout the day, too. So, you know, the quickest process is to call the front office and then we get walkies if it's an emergency.
Okay, so I'm going to bring this to a, I'm sorry. I think maybe what we need to do under agenda building is, is look at that whole question down the road.
And if there's any suggestions, let us know.
Yep. So, that was it for discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
And I think, Liz, did you want to vote on that?
You're muted.
You're muted.
She raised her hand.
Yes, I'm voting in favor, sorry.
No worries.
I didn't get my camera on that.
Next is a resignation from John Taft, who is a bus driver. And John is resigning because of health issues. So, I would make a motion that we accept the resignation of John Taft.
I'll second that.
Thank Sam. Discussion?
Short discussion. So, does that leave us staffed, obviously?
That leaves us staffed exactly what we need to run regular routes.
So, that goes back to next week's or next meeting's bus and van contracts and?
Yep.
Got it.
Yep. So, we with, and John has actually, he's been out the beginning of this year with the intention of coming back, and things didn't work out, which is why he's not coming back. So, we had been running regular routes without John. The hope was that when John comes back, then Joe can move off running a route every day and Joe can be in the building. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that at this point.
So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the resignation of John Taft? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you very much. Next, I have another resignation for Ann Daigies, who is resigning effective October I will make that motion. Josh second it? Discussion?
We will miss Ann a whole heck of a lot.
You have no idea.
But we are excited for her.
I will ask the obvious, is that a little short-handed?
Yep, we have a posting out there. Yep.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you tremendously for everything. Any other questions, discussions?
No.
All those in favor of accepting Ann's resignation with regret? Opposed? So, it's done.
Have fun at Fairhaven, my old stopping grounds.
Okay, last night, just so folks know, the superintendent evaluation tool, which is just an amazing thing in and of itself. I sent out to everybody a copy of that supervision tool. At the committee meeting tonight, we decided to more or less accept that supervision tool as it was or as it is. And so, what I would like to ask is that folks take a look at that supervision evaluation tool, and if you have anything that you want added or deleted, that you get that to me by the 14th of October, which is a week from Friday, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
So, that at the next board meeting on the?
19?
19, thank you. We can bring it to the full board for approval. Because I, Brian and I talked the other day, and I think we probably need moving forward to look at some other things, but I think.
Assess, I think.
From my perspective, having kicked this thing around for a good couple of years, and I'll say this publicly, I think originally, it was felt that we needed to build an evaluation tool that was very specific. I'm not sure that we necessarily need that at this point. However, I think we need to put it in place. And so, then moving forward, as Brian and I talked about, looking at setting goals, finding out from, getting input from lots of folks in terms of what they feel Brian can work on or might need to work on, or what he does very good, or whatever the case may be.
I absolutely need that feedback so that I can get better.
Yep. And so, we'll do that. And Brian and I talked about who might be involved in that session of meeting with folks. And I think we can set that up for the spring because it's kind of unfair to do it right now. But that will be the plan moving forward. So, if you have any feedback on that evaluation, let me know. And the last thing is, we've started the process of looking at an after-school director, the hiring process. And it's been posted, there are four responses.
Yep, four at this point.
And so, Brian and I, at some point, will get together looking at those candidates. And depending on the size of the candidate pool, we hope to bring two or three individuals to a panel for interviews. That panel will include one building administrator, which would be.
Maureen.
Maureen up in Tinmouth. And she, the reason we're looking at her is, and she has said she would, right? Is because she has had an after-school program up there.
For many years, yeah.
For many years. A district administrator, an after-school site director, one after-school staff member from Mill River, and a board member. And I reached out to Liz, and Liz has said that she'd be willing to do that. And we'd also talk about Cheryl Mearing.
Yeah, the site director, that's who we're thinking about.
Okay. So, we'll staff those, that panel, and then they would interview, if there's two or three. And then hopefully, they would be able to come up with one individual and bring it to the board.
Yep.
So, just wanted you to go ahead.
Only thing I'd add is that is similar to how we hired for director of IT, similar to how we hired for director of buildings and grounds.
Yep.
So, same process for that director level position.
Yep. And I really think it's important, it's a much better process than it was in the past, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And then the next one would be November sometime.
So far away.
At two, November two.
November 2nd, there you go, at six o'clock. Thank you.
Thanks, Len. Next would be policy for F3, F12 second reading, F4, F8, rescind, second reading. But Andrew's not here, so.
Jody, can you jump in? I wonder if there are any questions on those, the policies for second reading?
I am not aware of any, of any questions on those. We discussed them at the last board meeting for the first. And just to remind, we're just overarching, our desire was to go further to the V S B A model policies. And then there were a couple that we are putting forward for second reading for rescindment because they model state or federal level law that's already there. And so, we didn't think that they were necessary. Doesn't mean we don't think we need to follow them.
And these were appropriately posted in the Rutland Herald with our 10 days. So, tonight would be second reading. We would be adopting F3 and F12 as presented, and we would be rescinding F4 and F8 if there are no questions or concerns.
Anyone have any questions or concerns?
I'd make that motion that we.
You're going to do it?
I think we need two things. We approve F3 and F12.
Sounds good.
I'll second that.
We got a second from Nick. All in favor? Any opposed? Then it's unanimous.
And then I would make a motion to rescind F4 and F8.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second from Nick. All in favor?
Do we, do we have to have discussion or did we already have it?
We already had. Any discussion? Any questions or anything? Okay. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Moving along to billables and grants.
Yeah, yeah, actually, Ann's got a really great point.
I'm sorry.
Can we make a motion that Matt can sign those policies? Is that where you were going? So that the, the. So that the, the vice chair could sign on behalf of the board?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And unanimous.
And just before you move on, next meeting of the policy committee is October 11th at 5:30.
Thank you.
All right. Music's done.
The other night, like, it was last night. Anyway, we had a joint with the, the financial committee. And I think the, most of us had an idea that there wasn't, it wasn't going to be easy to do what we got to do. We were making ideas of what was happening. There's a, a couple of spots that somebody's available to us here at the, at the district. And we're trying to start from getting involved in one place, maybe this place and then the other four schools end up being shelled off a little bit. So we, we need some ideas that we need to, to cover everything, and that's going to be more through Tim than anybody else. Tim is our building and grounds director now. And he's doing pretty well. He's, he's made some business, Bobby.
Getting the ground running, yeah.
We have some big things coming up at Claren and the gym, if that's, that may be something we need to do, just because it's a possibility of getting some, what's the word I'm looking for? The poison stuff.
Oh, asbestos, yeah.
Asbestos.
Yep, yep. And I think Tim's got somebody coming out Friday to, to start quoting that.
You got to look at, there's a certain amount coming down. It's, when I remember other places in Claren, it's less than 1% of what it is, but it's still something that, that you want to take care of. So there may be some abatement stuff that's done. I did a few of those things over the years. It's not a lot of fun. We also discussed what would happen here. We've got some driveway work that may need to be done, whether it's done on a complete basis or just done in areas. That'll depend on cost availability that's there. We're going to get more of an idea of what we can actually figure for building and grounds after the next couple of meetings of, of financial committee. And we get, we got our, our money guy, if I want to put it that name, to, to work in. And he'll be able to help us out with stuff like that. Next meeting, I think, is not quite around, Liz, did anyone have a meeting set up?
November 1.
November 1.
1st, November the 1st. I have, I have two numbers here. One is, let's see, one is the 28th and one is the 24th. So let's do the first. Other than that, anything that's going very well, we're, we're doing pretty good in the buildings, we're doing pretty good in the stuff that's here. We have a mission going up with the bleachers, I think it's bleachers out in the, yeah, out in the field.
And then I'll throw in this, Doug, too. We did discuss a little bit about having a athletics package that would be separated out on the ballot, that we could address some of the bigger picture things, like the bleachers, stuff like that, that we wouldn't just build into our local budget. It would probably be a one-time thing, but we're going to work with Kim and Tim to come up with that and, and most likely have it a separate ballot item.
Yeah, we've been dealing with, trying to get to the point where we are going to be removing things because it's not, it's not something we can do, it's a little pricey for whatever. Instead of, instead of us removing certain things from big parts of the, of the finance information that we're going to be utilizing. So you aren't, you aren't going to be dropping something because it's not a value for us, you're dropping it because it's a value against what, what the rest of the, the monies and stuff going through in different places, what's really needed. So it's, it's going to be fun to, to sit back, because that's pretty new. I haven't, I've been here a lot of years and I haven't seen anything like that work. We'll see what happens. I think it's going to. But other than that, everything's fine. We'll meet again first of next month.
Awesome, thank you. Next would be community engagement.
We will be meeting Tuesday, the 11th, from 6:30 to 7:30. I will have to attend virtually, and so Ed's going to at least be hybrid if I can just get, I don't want to overcommit anybody getting to be in that room. It is right after another meeting, so if somebody can be the person there, that would be great. Otherwise, we would have to go virtual.
I'll be here.
I'll be here, too.
Excellent, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And next would be finance.
Good evening, everyone. I can't find this information in the background here. Yes, okay, so I will start this evening with pay warrants for approval from the general fund. We have a pay warrant in the amount of $508,000. Hold on a second. Yes, okay. Pay warrant in the amount of $508,830.29. We have another pay order in the amount of $1,207. We have a pay warrant in the amount of $2,102.75. We have a pay warrant in the amount of $3,448.45. And we have a pay order in the amount of $6,563.54 for a grand total of $522,151.52. From our student equity accounts, we have two pay warrants. One of Mill River in the amount of $204.45, and one from Tivent in the amount of $249 for a total of $453.45. Next, we have payroll for approval. We have payroll dated September 23rd in the amount of $594,188.34. We have payroll dated September 30th in the amount of $7,839.54 for a grand total And I move we accept and approve this payroll and these pay orders as presented. So I need a second.
I will second that.
Thank you, Sam. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
I'm sorry, say that again?
There was none on this end.
Okay, thank you for that, because my computer didn't switch over and I manually can see seeing none. All those in favor of accepting and approving payroll as presented, please raise their hands.
Yep, looks unanimous.
It's unanimous.
Perfect, thank you so much, everyone. So the next meeting of the finance committee will be in conjunction with Buildings and Grounds on November 1st at 6:00 PM. And thank you to members of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Can we do a motion to authorize vice chair to sign the warrants on behalf of the board?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Liz.
All in favor? And it's unanimous.
Thank you for that, man. Thank you, vice chair.
Thank you. Moving along, we're on to transact of the legal business. Nothing? All right. Agenda building.
So we've got the Tinmouth presentation, because we'll be up at Tinmouth, and that will be fully in-person, no virtual, no hybrid. We have VSBA resolutions. We have a bus-van update. We'll see if we have something at that point. Coral was going, I'll work with Coral and we'll get you that transportation information as an email prior to that. That's all I have written out here.
You want to talk about the flowchart thingy?
Oh, we can, yeah, we could talk about that chain of command. Yep, I was going to send that out, but we can put it-
Well, no, go ahead and send it out, and then if there's any questions.
And if there are questions, yep, yep, yep. Fantastic.
I wanted to add something. I was just reminded of Brian, I had sent something to Brian over the summer. I was in the car and I listened to a program.
Oh, the, the late start for school, start times?
Yeah, yeah. So there was a really interesting program about start times for secondary schools. And I sent it to Brian, who thought that it would be a future-
Yeah.
-agenda item in light of, you know, alleviating, it might be a solution to alleviating-
Transportation, yeah.
-bus pressures. Yeah, so it's not, this is not, you know, it doesn't have to happen on the 19th, but that agenda is looking, so just-
Yeah.
You might even, you might want to just kind of keep it in the parking lot-
Yep.
-or a later date, but definitely as we, you know, move through the year and have to start thinking about transportation as vice president.
I might, Liz, I might recommend end of November, if you're comfortable with that.
Absolutely, you would be, you know, you and Tim would be the ones that kind of dictate when that comes in.
I will make a note of that, thank you.
Did you still have the VSBA update?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And I know we've talked about it before, and perhaps, because it's only two weeks away, it's too soon. When we're visiting all the other schools, are we able to get a, a short walkthrough? I know we had mentioned that previously, but-
I'll talk to Maureen, and we do not have personnel before that 19th meeting, so I wonder, I'll check with Maureen, maybe if folks want to show up 10 minutes early to get that tour. That way we're not stopping the meeting and doing that and, and keeping William in peg TV-
Yeah.
Hey, I'll be back!
Staring at a blank wall, yeah, yeah.
I think it's crazy, yeah.
I will check with Maureen on that.
Yep, just email us, let us know.
Will do.
Perfect. Anything else for agenda building? CEO, we have a board for executive session. All right, then I move that we adjourn on noon at 8:41.